Buenas en hafa de. Thank you, everyone, for being here. The Committee on Education, Self-Determination and Historic Preservation, Infrastructure, Border Safety, Federal and Foreign Affairs, and Maritime Transportation will now convene this joint public hearing regarding the following: Resolution Number 121-36 LS, Relative to Respectfully Requesting That President Joseph R. Biden Jr. Act Within His Administrative Authority To Remove The Deadline To File A Claim With the Foreign Claims Settlement Commission Under the Guam World War II Loyalty Recognition Act And To Further Extend The Act's Eligibility To The Survivors of Descendants Who Had Passed Away After The Initial Filing Deadline Of June 20, 2018. Resolution Number 54-36 COR Relative To Respectfully Petitioning The United States Congress To Annact Legislation Removing The Filing Deadline For Guam World War II Loyalty Recognition Act Claims Program. And Lastly, Bill Number 130-36, An Act Add A New Section 13.2 To Chapter 1 Of Division 1, Title V Guam Code Annotated, Relative To Establishing The Guam World War II Reconciliation Act Of 2021 To Compensate Claims Of The Greatest Generation Of Guam For The Atrocities Suffered During The World War II Occupation Of Guam. Today is Friday, July 16, 2021, and it is currently 8:13 a.m. For the record and in accordance with the open government's law, public notices were sent out via email To All Senators, Stakeholders, and All Main Media Broadcasting Outlets On Friday, July 9, 2021, And Again On Tuesday, July 13, 2021. Notice was also provided on the Guam Legislature's website. Joining me today, I'd like to thank Senator Shelton, Senator Justin Augustine, Speaker Tulahe, and Senator Teletai DeGruy for being present today. Before we proceed, the legislature has general rules of conduct that must be followed. All must abide by the rules of conduct. Individuals testifying shall first be recognized by the chair, and before speaking, please state your name for record-keeping purposes. The order of questioning will begin once all testimonies are completed. Questions and testimony shall be confined to the substance or nature of the agenda, and personal inference as to the character or motive of any senator or any individual testifying is not permitted. We've called this joint public hearing To Allow Our World War II Survivors An Opportunity To Speak On The Resolutions 121-36, Authored By Myself, Resolution 54-36, Authored By Vice Speaker Tina Munya Barnes, And Bill 130-36, Presented By Senator Joe S. Augustine. All of these seek to re— all of these, all of the resolutions and the bills Seek To Remove The Deadline To File Claims For The Guam World War II Loyalty Recognition Act. I just want to say a few words. What we are going to do in the order that we will proceed with this hearing is, I will allow each senator, the main sponsor Or Those Speaking On Behalf Of The Main Sponsor, To Speak On Their Legislative Measure, And Then We Will Proceed With The Testimony. This joint hearing was approached with different— The legislation in these, in the agenda today Was approached as a joint hearing because Everything that these three legislative measures are trying to do Is to seek to remove the deadline to file claims For The Guam World War II Loyalty Recognition Act. And So We're All Here To Discuss The Same Mechan— The Same Intent With Different Types Of Mechanisms Moving Forward. So first to discuss Resolution 121-36, Which Is Basically A Resolution Requesting The President Joe Biden To Act Within His Administrative Authority To Remove The Deadline To File A Claim With The Foreign Claims Settlement Commission Under The Guam World War II Loyalty Recognition Act. And To Further Extend The Act's Eligibility To The Survivors Of Decedents Who Had Passed Away After The Initial Filing Deadline Of June 20, 2018. And The Co-Sponsors On These Resolutions Is Senators Amanda Shelton, Vice Speaker Tina Rose Munya Barnes, Speaker Theresa Tulahe, Senator Justin Augustine, Senator Sabina Perez, Senator James Moylan, And Senator Frank Blas. I will now— Are you doing the bill or the resolution? I will now offer time for Senator Amanda Shelton To Speak On Resolution 54-36.
Seduas Massey, Madam Chair. Buenas hafa de, everyone. Vice Speaker Tina Rose Munya Barnes Is Currently Attending To An Urgent Matter, So On Behalf Of The Vice Speaker, I Will Open Resolution Number 54-36, And Madam Chair, If It's Alright To Do Bill Number 130 Concurrently. Resolution Number 54-36 Was Introduced By Vice Speaker Tina Rose Munya Barnes, By Myself, By Senator Frank F. Blas, Senator Clint Rogell, Senator Jose Pito Tulahe, Joe S. Augustine, Tony Adams, Mary Comacho Torres, Christopher M. Duennias, Speaker Theresa M. Tulahe, Senators Sabina E. Perez And Talina Cruz Nelson. And It Is Relative To Respectfully Petitioning The United States Congress To Annact Legislation Removing The Filing Deadline For The Guam World War II Loyalty Recognition Act Claims Program. Bill Number 130-36 LS, Introduced By Tina Rose Munya Barnes And James C. Moylan, Is An Act To Add A New Section 13.2 To Chapter 1 Of Division 1 Title V Guam Code Annotated, Relative To Establishing The Guam World War II Reconciliation Act Of 2021 To Compensate Claims Of The Greatest Generation Of Guam For Their Atrocities Suffered During The World War II Occupation Of Guam. This Resolution And The Bill Was Introduced After Receiving Countless Calls From War Survivors Living In The States As Well As Here On Guam Who Missed The Deadline. Many Stating They Were Informed Of The Program. Others Said They Simply Gave Up Hope For Many Years Of Unsuccessful Attempts. Arman Amku Came To Our Doors Asking For Help, Stating That It's Just Not Right To Be Denied What Is Rightfully Theirs Because Of A Deadline Established By Congress. For Arman Amku, This Award Is Not Just A Check. It Is Recognition By The Federal Government, Recognizing, Acknowledging The Atrocities, Pain And Suffering They Endured During The War, And That No One Should Have The Right To Take Away Something That Was Not Theirs To Begin With. Vice Speaker Tina Munya Barnes Committed To Do The Right Thing By Arman Amku. From The Day The First Check Was Issued And All Throughout The Pandemic, Her Office Worked As Hard As They Could To Assist Arman Amku. Unfortunately, Many Letters From The Foreign Claims Commission Stating That There Was No Record Of A Claim Being Filed Or That A Certain Claim Did Not Meet A Deadline Were Received. Last Year, A Bill Was Authored To Expedite The Payment Of Claims Due To A Technicality In The Federal Law. This Year, This Resolution And This Bill Is Offered To Extend Or Remove A Filing Deadline. It Is My Hope That We Can Make All These Claims Whole And Every War Survivor Be Given The Award They Rightfully Deserve. Seduas Massey, To All Of Our Colleagues Who Are Here Today, Madam Chair, To The Co-Sponsors Of This Resolution And This Bill, And To All The War Survivors And Their Families Who Are Here To Testify, Seduas Massey For Continuing This Journey And This Fight With Us. Thank You Very Much.
Thank you, Senator Shelton. We Now Would Like To Bring In Those That Would Like To Give Oral Testimony, Mr. Ralph Rivera, Lilian Terrell, Manel Fuharin, Jose Garrido, Vizenti Garrido, And William Sablon. Good Morning. Okay, Perhaps We Can Just Start From My Left, Your Right. And Good Morning, Sir. If You Could Please State Your Name For The Record And Go Ahead And Proceed With Your Oral Testimony. You May Proceed.
Ma'am, I Think This Is About The Second Or The Third Time A Meeting Like This Was Started. If I Can Remember Back In 1964 Or 65, I'm Not Sure. There Was An Jewish Attorney That Was Living In Tumon. And He Brought It To My Attention When He Was Going To Bring The Issue Up. But Anyway, At That Time, Everybody That Was Born During The War And A Little Bit After The War Before 1950 Were All Supposed To Be Compensated Some Kind Of Monetary Amounts Up Until 1950. Because Japan Gave The United States Millions Of Dollars To Help Correct The Mistakes They Made In Guam And The Marianas. The Trust Territory Wasn't In The U.S. Since Then, But It Was Basically The Mariana Islands. But I Know The Micronesian Islands Were Heavily Involved Also. But The Thing Was, The Monies We're Supposed To Be Getting Now, $10,000 Or Whatever The Amount Is, That Is Very Minute Compared To What Was Promised To Us Back In The Early And Middle Sixties. People Born After 19— 1945, They Were All Supposed To Get Monies Also For The One, Like The Ones Getting It Before 1945. I Been To Combat Like Some Of You Have. And The Thing Is, When You're In Combat, Whatever Your Officers Or Ranking Officers Tell You, You Believe Them Full Heartedly. I Feel Sorry For The Boys From The Afghanistan And The Girls. That Was A Mediocre Trade Off, But They Lost Their Respect. But To Us That Fight During The Vietnam War, We Were The First Increment To Go In And Fight For That Country. I Was Stationed In Okinawa At That Time. I Was With The Beginning 173rd Airborne Brigade That Was Being Formed To Cover The Whole Pacific Area, Like The 101st And The 82nd On The East Coast. We Hadn't Fully Built Our Strength Up. We Were 1,600 Men. And They Told Us To Go To Vietnam And Fight That War And Hold The Fort Down Until The 82nd Or The 101st Or Big Red One. Any Of The Big Boys Would Come Over And Replace Us. Well, Guys, Every Year That We Were There, We Were Only Supposed To Be There For A Year. But A Lot Of Us Stayed Longer. I Stayed An Extra Year Longer Because We Were Short Of Manpower. A Lot Of My Own Guys, They Got Killed. And At The Same Time, I'm Thinking, What Do These Boys Get? Or What Are They Going To Get After Fighting This War? Nothing. Just A Burial. Adios amigo, And That's It. But Anyway, Coming Back To World War II, The Japanese Offered The United States Millions Of Dollars, And A Lot Of It Was For The Local People To Be Compensated For The Hardships That They Endured. You Know, The Walk To Manengun Hills And A Few Other Things, And The Beheading Of Father Duennias, Which Is My Uncle, And I Was Born At The Same Plot, Same Spot That He Was Killed. Because At That Time, After He Got Killed, It Was A 72nd Or 77th Army Hospital At That Time. Father Duennias Stood Up For A Lot Of People, But I Don't See Too Much Reverie About Him Going On. Same Thing With The Other People That Died And Perished During World War II. Lot Of Children, Lot Of Mothers Were Hurt. But Anyway, I'm Only Here Today To See How Far We're Going To Get With This Again. I'm Getting Older Now. Back In 64, 65, I Was A Musical Producer. I Knew How To Tap Dance, I Knew How To Cha Cha, And I Knew Everything. Now, As You See, I'm Walking With A King. We All Get Sick At Once In One. But Anyway, I Just Hope That This Legislature Pushes On Everything And Anything The United States Promises Us And Hold Them To The Part. Because There's Been A Lot Of Inadequacies Going On. Right Now, Congress, The Diplomacy Of The Americans Soldiers, They're Going Chaotic. Right Now, Nobody Even Knows Who The President Is. You Know? And That's Hard To Say. Because You See The Man Speaking To You On Microphones And He Doesn't Even Know, Look Like, He Doesn't Even Seem To Know What He's Talking About. But Anyway, That's For People To Determine. So In Response To This, I'm Just Saying This Isn't The First Time That This Issue Has Held Up. Back In The Early Sixties, And Then About A Few Years Later Again, Everybody Was Supposed To Be Compensated Per Individual That Was In The World War II Era. Not Just One Person Out Of The Whole Family And You Get $10,000. I'm Not Here For The Money. I'm Here To Try And Correct This Situation From The Way It Started At The Beginning. $10,000? That's Enough To Just Go Pay For My Car To Get Fixed Up And Probably Get A Paint Job. But If You Can See The Way Back, I Was A Little Kid. I Was Two Years Old When The War Ended. But I Remember When I Was About Three Or Four Years Old. The Soldiers And Navy Guys Would Tell Us That We Would Get Money And We Would Be Recuperating From Everything That We're Experiencing. But For Now, You're Going To Have To Eat Our Food And This And That. You Know What Our Food Was? Our Food Was The Garbage Pail Of The American Sailors, Navy And Army Leftovers After They Ate. Chamoros Like Me, Including Ben Over There, I'm Sure, We Were Eating Garbage Pails. There Was No Stores Available, No Construction Stores Available To Build A House. Everybody Was Sort Of Like Ripping Everything Off The Old Buildings That Had Been Destroyed Or Whatever. Even The Commanding Officer, The Chamorro Guy, I Forget His Name, It's Right On Tip Of My Tongue. But Anyway, He Was The Only American Or The Only Chamorro Guy During World War II. He Even Had To Go To His Own Distribution Area For The Navy To Steal Materials, Steal Materials To Rebuild His Mom And Dad's House. But He Had The— No, He Had The Power To Do It Because He Was A Ranking Officer. So They Went. But What About The Other People? You Know, Nothing. We Didn't Have Anything To Look Forward To, Really. We Were Eating Out Of The Garbage Pail Of All The Military Guys, Eating And Drinking. We Made Food Out Of Whatever Food We Can Get From The Local— Local Plants. And After That, My Grandfather Was One Of The Original World War II Prisoners That Were Sent To Japan. And After The War Was Over, They Were All Brought Back. And All Of Them, All Of Them That Went To Japan Were Restationed To San Diego, California, Which Is Where I Went. I Was Only Two Or Three Years Old. I Didn't Know What The United States Of America Looked Like Or What San Diego Was. When I Got There, Wow. First Thing I Had Was A Hamburger Or A Hot Dog. That Was Chow. Compared To What We Were Eating In Guam. Guam Was In A Sad State Then For Almost Five Or Six Years. And We Had— I Contributed A Lot Of This Work With The Early Chamoros That Were In The Legislature. Because There's One Photograph Out Here In The Hallway Showing The President Signing Something. Everybody Was There Except For The Chamorro Guys That Participated. You Know? I Can't Think Of Their Names Right Now, Okay? But You Know Who I'm Talking About. So That mural Out There Is Wrong. It Doesn't Have The Chamorro Characters That Were Participated In It. And As Far As I'm Concerned, I Just Want The People Of Guam To Be Given Things That They Promised. And For You People Being The Legislature, You're Fighting For Us. Like I Fought For You When You Were Kids When I Was In Vietnam. So I Gave My All. Now I'm Getting Older. But For The New Kids Coming Up, Please Support Them. Give Them Something To Fight For And Something To Work For. Don't Give It To Them Free Though. There's Been Too Much Freedom Around Here. Even The Schools Are Getting Weak Now. Even The Schools Are Getting Real Light-Handed With The Students. Kids Walk Around With Their Beards In School. They Got Long Hair. The Girls, They Go Like They're Going To Some Kind Of Cocktail Party When They Dress To Go To School. And The School Buses Are Sitting Out There To Pick Them Up, To Take Them Home. Big School Buses. But Only About Maybe A Quarter Of The Buses Load Up While The Rest Of The Boys And The Girls Ride Off In Their Cars. So Let's Try And Put Some Strength Into Our Kids. I Used To Be A School Teacher. I Was A Choreographer. I Was A Musical Director And A Lot Of Other Things That A Lot Of People Would Like To Participate In. I Was Just Fortunate To Get Into It. But Now, I'm Just Passing All That Down To The New Kids That Can Pick Up Any Ideas And Get Things Going. So In Regards To Everything Else, If You Have Any Question To Ask Me, Please Feel Free. I'm Not Hiding Anything From Anybody. The Only Thing I'm Going To Say Is, I Grew Up In San Diego. I Learned How To Play Football, Basketball, And Baseball. Baseball About The Only Thing Here In Guam That They Had When I Came Back. I Was A Champion. Considering, I Was A Tap Dancer, I Was A Dancer And Everything. But I'm Not Trying To Pamper Myself Because Of That. It's Just A Gift. I Had More Opportunities Back In The States Than Most Of The Kids That I Left Behind. My Only Age Group. But Anyway, I Came Back. I Worked For BYA. And I Started My Own Production Company. The Bill Sablon Production. I Brought Top Filipinos Into The Island. Top Filipinos. I'm Not Talking About Second Or Third Class. I Brought Dolphy, Rico J. Puno, Top Singer Of The Philippines. And A Few Other Lady Females That Had Lot Of Respect In The Philippines. So That, Then I Brought In Society of Seven From Honolulu, Which Is The Top Fan In Hawaii. They Came Here And Stayed Here For A Whole Month. They Enjoyed Guam, They Loved Guam. They Didn't Even Want To Leave To Go Back To The Philippines To Visit Their Families. They Just Wanted To Stay Here And Continue Having The Fun. But Anyway, Hello? I Remember You In Those Days. You Were A Hot Number Girl. You Were Beautiful And Young And You Were Talented. And I Was— I Give You Credit For Being So Young To Be Up On That Stage At The Reef. Okay? You're A Good Example For The Young Girl. Anyway, Thank You Very Much. Can I Go About My Business Now?
Thank You Very Much, Mr. William Sablon, For Your Testimony. Ms. Lilian Terrell, You May Proceed.
Sorry. Good Morning And Thank You For Inviting Me To Come In And Testify For My Mom. My Mom Passed Away In 2007. I Thank Also Mrs. Bamba That Started This Path Of The Chamorro Working. She Was The First Person My Mom Went To, You Know, Were Invited To Tell Her Story, Her Side Of This Story. I'm The Daughter, My Name Is Lilian Terrell. My Mother Is Barcelisa Comacho Espinoza, Born In April 8, 1928. Her Family Lives In San Ramon District. That Is Behind The Superior Court. She Lived Here. On The Timeline, You Know, In December 7, 1941, Hawaii Pearl Harbor Was Attacked. But On Guam, It Was December 8, 1941. It Was A Mass At The Basilia In Immaculate Conception. It Was Also A Fiesta For Haganya, Monday Early Morning, When She And Her Mom Went To Church, You Know, And During The Mass, Men From Outside, She Didn't Know Who It Was, Were Yelling, "Fan Malogu Sigidzon Hatuk." Find A Place To Hide. My Mom Ran Out. And The First Thing She Saw In The Sky Were Planes Flying Over, Silver Planes. Okay? But Instead Of Hiding, She Went Home To Her Family. For A Couple Days, They Were There. Then A Spokesman For The Japanese Came To Their Home And Told Them, "Move Out, You're Not Staying Here. Go Find A Place. Take Your Stuff." Now, I Like To Meet To You The Household And That Thing Because I Have The— Well, I'm Sorry. The Household Was— If You Can Hear Me. Oh, Am I Not? I Had It All Set Up. Here. On The Household Of Her Family Was Antonia Agigee. That's Her Grandmother. She Was 67 Years Old. Her Mother Was 35 Years Old, Maria Comacho Espinoza. Her Father Is Joaquin Espinoza, De Castro Espinoza. He Was 34 Years Old. His Oldest Son Is Clubfooted. He's 14 Years Old. His Name Is Antonio Comacho Espinoza. And My Mother Was Barcelisa. She Was 11 Years Old. This Is A Census Of 1940, Before The War Came. This Was A Census For Them. They Stayed, Right? And Then Jose Was Only Two Years Old. They Had To Find A Way To Move. Their Mother, Their Grandmother Had Land In Bediqui, Their Family Land. So They Went There And Farmed, You Know? But She Told Me, She Told Our Family That, You Know— Because It Was A Living— They Had To Leave The House A Soldier. It Was A Difficult Time For Them Because All The Food That Was— It was a difficult time for them because all the food that was planted and, and, you know, taking care at home was nearsighted and so they had to run to find a place to, to live. So it was becoming difficult for them for food, water, and stuff. But because in Bediiki, you can fish, right? Ee, ee. I mean ee, ee, eels and all of that. But in the, during that time, right? In 1943 to 1944, the Japanese soldiers, you know, men, women, and children were this... Were separated because they had to work either the military project or they had to go farming, clearing lands. My mom went all the way up to Marissa, pulling grass, rocks. Hungry. She said she's always hungry. She had family member bring her breadfruit, you know, or whatever. And then she also said that during that time, when I guess the Japanese noticed that Americans were coming by, you know? Because in 1944, the Japanese soldier had people walking, okay? Chamorro men were killed for no reason. Her father, Joaquin Castro Espinoza, because of his light skin, he's part of Spanish, okay? He's six feet. They took him out on the field to show the people that anybody that, you know, was refusing or they didn't have, you know, their color of their skin, they were beaten severely. My grandfather's spinal cord was smashed, so he was paralyzed half of his, his body. So now he's home. My grandmother was the one dragging him. He's still, you know, fermented aggie and, and, and those things because the Japanese would bring him rice. Because my grandfather learned it from his grandfather how to ferment aggie like that. So they, that's in their drinking, their whiskey, I guess. Well, anyway, sorry, thank you. They dragged him around and his feet were bleeding during the marches because, you know, my grandmother was carrying him like, like a gunny sack and his feet was dragging. And, and on the Fourth March, she said she would... My mother remembered the one that scared her was the most was when they were walking. I don't know if it's Meninga or whatever. But they were whispering, "They dug a hole." You know? "They dug a hole. They're gonna kill us all. It's a real big hole," my mom said. So her uncle, Francisco Camacho, Camacho, that's my grandmother's oldest brother, was helped, forced to kneel in front of the hole with a rifle in their head, on his head. When the Japanese start yelling and running out, you know, to the... Because they saw American planes flying over. Then they were safe. The people ran. I don't know where, you know? But they tried to find their way to American soul, you know, where they're at. They were rationed. They were given, you know, American people were... Gave little ration to the people that they, I think Sumai, I'm not too sure. But I do have records of them. Some of the people in Guam, you know? They were taken from Guam and given to other islands. I have the, you know, the documents here where the, you know, from Saipan and whatever, you know? Palau, Chamorro, and, you know, that's how I think Chamorro, Kenya, everything. So anyway, when, the one that really upset me was my mom went to three meetings, I mean testimonial. It was first Bamba, okay? She, she highly thought of her as a really good lady because she was going after for the Chamorro's benefit. And then it was Blossom and Berdalio, I'm not too sure. So when that day came on, you know, I never thought I had to go down or my, my dad, my dad is 94. He's still alive. Had to go down and file, you know? Because all that documents that they've been going to meetings, you know, they were signing documents. They were asking donation for paperwork to be done, to provide for them. The one that I, I, I was really upset was when I went down there, they told me I, my mom never filed. Well, that's not her fault. She cannot live to 18, 2018. She was sickly. She was already in her 90s years old. You know? It's not that it was too late. It was not too early for them, you know? I really want my mom to be heard because her story and her family's stories, they saw men's heads cut off. My auntie Maria, my mom was ran after by a young man with no arms trying to kill them on the road up to San Ramon. And, you know? I also, you know, I feel those people that are up there in the war claims museum were not represented really good because at least their older children can come in, you know, and apply for that. Because they know that their family, their family is the one that, you know, was suffering. They lost family members. Like, like I said, my uncle was never seen again after the war. It was, he was gone already. I don't know. Men were being killed. Women were raped and everything. I have, you know, documents all the way up to the 1944 where, you know, when the military came in and, you know, they were helping the people. My family couldn't go down to Haganya anymore, Hagatnya, San Ramon, because the place was destroyed during the war. Bombings and stuff. So they stayed in Bediiki and then later on moved into Sinanya. And then, you know, they moved down to Chalampaguna where I'm at. But thank you very much for listening to me and, you know, my stories, I want my mom heard. You know, it's, it's very sad that a lot of the people that suffered were not given their, you know? They waited. They waited long, I'm pretty sure, you know? It's just that it, it took a while for somebody to open their... Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mrs. Terrell. May I ask, are you in support of these measures?
Yes, ma'am. And that's why I'm here.
Thank you very much. Mr. Garrido, Vicente Garrido? Please state your name for the record and you may proceed with your testimony. Good morning, sir. Thank you for being here today.
Benash. Wow, she, Vicente Ozoa Garrido. Don't couldn't I support this thing, the middle resolution? For this war repression? Estar recebi docu, ma apus nsa kan? Por se ato la matu ma agi pa besu poti, na fan ma pasi, todo y ti man man ma apasi tabia. I like me a good reporti, gini na maski binti min, na Chamorro. Man mamadesi por esti gera. Ghi tempun apunes, gawka presion, gini gislata. Maski binti mit? Lo konto man la la la, da konto man ma apasi? Taalza ti seguro kuwa singku mit? Ti seguro kuwa singku mit? Da maski binti mit? Man mamadesi? Por gua hura i? Guz man hungyo, na hungyo na fan ma pasi, todo y ta. Lo man hungyo loke? Na kun todo y man ma opus, ni man ma otai ta ti? Sa sia finene na sti muna posibli sti war repression? Sia finene na manatsu? Manatsu lu? Da ma koutra, na fa 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 ma pasi? Manau nita loke, gini ni man onko, onko sta, ti ti maton onko, lo onko? Ati ni onko, ni okini ni unnu gini? Ah? Ma fanyabo antisi di gera? Ni nyabo? Ma opus na naahu? Adingo i lo tano, pati ma fana gi desa onus ta taum, antisi di si na naum, al manadongo? Man gekintu sa por war repression gua gui, estao ga gi gi no binti? Cinqueta onus, pat quarenta onu, man gekintu war pe? Lo talza, ti man ma hasu, talza, talza pasi, ti man ma pasi? Talza war repression pe men ni afu fa? Afu la ti man ma hasu du sia? Por man hungyo na todo? Umanagwa, biu, resolution pa na men men, do man na holung, talza, da ma pasi, do man na faktu ashi? Man na faktu mi? Da todo? Fan manau i? Estane manadongo ni man onko, por manau ni fa magun, sa tenga man gentusit por descendants? But here, if you know English? Por se finesian na ma posibli, na manas? Ma sefta, ne de gertamunya? Lo? Aga sa su poti sti war repression? Ko ma agufo sa man si biu ten thousand? Ta ta? Iti popu i no nanga? Uma nuahu gu me la Vietnam, matu ta ti sa mananai yo? Takai ma apus na sa kan? Lo risi si bi war repression, ma nuahu gu me la Vietnam? Iha lumta onu gira Vietnam? Ah, hi ti eti, ya lungi kusina, na ga giyo? Iha lumta onu gira Vietnam? Matu au ta ti? Por se, le ma apu na sa kan, na sa kan, lo risi si bi war repression? Ko ma agufo? Di si no sa onu, do todo, ko ma agufo? Lo la gi pa da ta, tulit ta ti? Na managwa interest? Da di di edo na tempun i lengana pa da ta fa manau is Chamorro war repression? Do gua interest gi kada sa kan? Broker, United States? Da talza man manait interest? La la angi sina i pa ma losia na refugius, but edo ze hostius gi de man ma... Konigi Iran pa ma losia de man ma riis man manau, ba da millions? Ita? Ba, taosuna? Ah, hi mi ti takagou du lo ki girauta gatu? Man ga i ta, na i ta nu, edo na manai gini? Lo man hungyo, na ma pasi? Todo y man la 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 pa gu, ni man udu sia, edo na matu na es, estao risibi docu? Da matu pa besu poti sti sia ti man mananai? Lo guz man hungyo, na todo, todo? Di di, Mrs. Emsley? Gi gi da manu, ma opus pa wahir, outen na ni mati, talza? Na pinit sti? Best gi, na i pa gu? Ita ni, tumati ti zisti sia? Tu muafu ma aling na pa la, di, di ri sota pa la man Chamorro, dan todo sia ga giu sempie? Men ta sa la la lahu, gini gino tano? Ga giu gini sempie no su poti sti sia, tumatazu pa la man Chamorro sia? Ni bafai, ipor fa ma fa na, ipor be ma ta, gini gislata? Redgi? Por se no pa besa ongan, da sidur ma si todo, ndu sinu do? Si speaker, Delai, Senator Shelton, Senator Nelson, Senator Augustine, Taitegui? Sidur ma si todo ni, na posibli sti, na ga gi gini da, manatsadegi sti? Na gini stesti todo man manau i na i? Per si angi sina pan tuni, da fa ma pasi du sia, man ma opus ta ti ni dumengen? Sa sina du, atana di man manau i ta penis? Ni iha lungi kama na man ma intoturn? Iha lungi kama gira the states? Ti man mamadesi pa ya gi ita ni man ma ma polri gi? They were treated like refugees or prisoners in their own homeland. Le da ta penis ni, ali man ma go tiu lu, za por di, tempun gi gera gita na isten? Man manau i twenty thousand kada uno? Ah? Da man ma may gu ma ulik, ekondi sun todo yita, talza? Lo ten thousand is a lot of money pa Chamorro. Lo lekta, ku man pa si nu ko ma agufo, di si no sa onu? Na ko ma agufo? Sidur ma si no risibi ten thousand, lo di si no sa onu, ko ma agufo? Sidur ma si?
Mr. Garrido? Mr. Ralph Rivera? You may proceed with your testimony.
Wow. How do you follow that? Good morning. Senator Nelson, Senator Augustine, Senator Shelton, Senator Taitegui, Speaker Terlai. Thank you for allowing us this platform and opportunity to share with you stories just how the courage and strength of our manonko. How, I, I cannot fathom how they survived this for two and a half years. I cannot. For the record, I am not a war survivor. However, comma, I am a proud son of two war survivors. I was born 15 years after the war. But if not for these two individuals, I will not be here today to speak with you and share their stories. First, the most amazing human being I know in my life. It's my mother. Her name is Angustia Tanatongo Rivera. Although she is no longer with us, from up above, I guarantee you, she's telling me, get this right. I miss her. My father, Jesus Salas Rivera, is still with us. He's in Washington. That's why he's not here today. I will be advocating for both of them and reminding all of us that we need to remember, we need to write it down and remind ourselves of the sacrifice the people in this room, the people on this island, and the people abroad. Twenty-eight thousand, one hundred and five days. Twenty-eight thousand, one hundred and five days. Next week, it's gonna be twenty-eight thousand, one hundred and five days since Guam was liberated. Twenty-eight thousand, one hundred and five days for all of us collectively to get this right. We had that many days to complete this project and we're still not there. I have a job. I had careers. Imagine if I was given a project and it took me twenty-eight thousand, one hundred and five days to complete it? I won't have a job today. We have a job. We have an obligation. You listen to these stories, I don't know amongst us who was there. I can only imagine. I cannot fathom the atrocities and the fear that they all went through. I cannot. I served in the military 24 years proudly. You remember that, Joe? My son is serving in the military proudly. But I cannot remember a day where I didn't miss a meal. I cannot remember a day where I had to go hide from somebody. I can't remember a day where I feared every minute of that single day. Yet, as we listen to these stories, sometimes, and I hope that this legislature is not a, an empty barrel. I hope the rhetoric matches the action. And I apologize, as I'm coming off a, a bit passionate here, but folks, we have one job to do. Three thousand, six hundred and fifty days. Three thousand, six hundred and fifty days is how many days it's been since my mom got promoted to heaven. We failed her. We did, us. And everyone else that's not here today, that were survivors of the war. How dare we? How dare we wait this long? How dare we slow play this? How dare we drag our feet? We elected officials to go out there and do what's right for us, the people. Yet, twenty-eight thousand, one hundred and five days, three thousand, six hundred and fifty days. Who has an answer to that? I don't, I hope you do. Again, I don't mean to come off this way, I don't, I, I'm going off strip here, or script. But after hearing everyone's story and, and multiple other stories, we sit here, one, two, three, four, five. Five senators. Out of fifteen. Damn it, boy, I love it when you guys come around during the election time and talk about priorities. But there's only five of you guys to listen to these stories here. Five. That's not even half. If you really do care about the people, let your actions match the rhetoric. And please, don't come to me next time and ask me for my vote and be talking about manonku this and manonku that. I will show you the door. Because I know one thing. I have a responsibility with my job, and if I don't meet that responsibility, I am terminated. We all have a responsibility, you all have one job here. This bill, thank you for this, I can't see anybody not supporting it. Okay, not much of a controversial issue, is it? Kind of a Band-Aid to a fix, an arbitrary line in the sand that we now have to, okay, well, let's extend it out, right? But what happened before? My mom always told me, boy, never mind living in the past. It's okay to visit it, but never mind living in it. She's right. I don't want to dwell in the past, I don't want to marinate in the past, but damn it, moving forward, these guys here deserve it. My dad deserves it. And all the other survivors deserve it. What they deserve is your passion to make things right. And for us to sit here and remind you for the third, fourth time, the umtint time, Mr. Bill, Mr. Grito, Ms. Lillian, and multiple other hearings, but yet we're still here talking about a measure that's, okay. So, golf clap to everybody, good job on that, on something that was supposed to be done many years ago. All I ask, man, is that people just do what they're here to do. And quit kicking this can down the road. Somebody pick this up and somebody do something with it. If you read this bill, it's got provisions in there, 30 days from the passage, and if it's not passed, then we will go with whatever the default plan is. It's cart before the horse. Somebody please read this. If you don't want to, I can for you. It makes no sense. Empty promises. Ah, here we go again. I respect this group of people. I am a product of these group of people, like we all are. If not for them and their courage and their strength and their fortitude and their will to survive, we wouldn't be here today. Can you see the irony there? If not for them to survive, you guys won't be sitting up there, but yet, but yet, you control their fate. Think about that, just let it, think about that for a second, I'll give you guys some time. Well, we have, when we sit there and we have to beg for things. Beg you to do the right thing? Common sense? There was a custodian at a place I worked at, his name was Fidel. Simple guy, didn't say a lot of words, but when he said words, he said something that was truly profound. He said something to me, years ago, and he says, "Raph." That's what he called me, Raph. Said, "If you want somebody to take you serious, you want somebody to respect you," and I swear to you, verbatim, this is what he said to me. He says, "Boy, say it, then do it." The most simplest words, but so profound. Wow. I mean, that's common sense, right? Let's not make this go on one more day. Okay? My, um, I want to, I want to close out this way. First, I just now remembered that I did not give my name. My name is Ralph Rivera. A proud son of Angustia and Jesus. On Monday, I received an email inviting me to come provide verbal testimony. And I punched the air. I punched the air because, finally, there's a few people of you here and not here that I've been communicating with for the past year. And when I say communicate, I mean calling and sending emails and whatever I needed to do to grab your attention. Finally, we're going to get this extended. I got an invite, wow. What do you think the first thing I did? Called my dad on Monday. Couldn't reach him, Tuesday, couldn't reach him. Wednesday, couldn't reach him. Yesterday, I finally get a call from him FaceTime. He called me from the hospital. He called me from his bed in the hospital. He's been hospitalized from the weekend until now. He's getting older, he's getting more frail, he's still with us. We want him to stay with us as long as we can, and not for this. Talk about a dog with a bone. When we fight for ourselves, no big deal, but when we start fighting for our family, watch out. Because gloves are off and we don't care, I don't care. My dad was in the hospital, guys, still is. He's hanging on, not for this. But let's na, let's not make one more fatality, a failure, one more failure. That's what this is. Every day someone passes away is a failure on your part collectively. Do what you're hired to do, and if you can't do that, find somebody else who will. But for darn's sake, do what's right to these guys here. And my father. My mother's a little bit late. Because folks, if not us, then who? If not now, then when? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rivera. Just to be clear for the record, do you support Resolution Number 121-36, Resolution Number 54-36, and Bill Number 130-36?
Yes, I do, Senator Nelson.
Thank you very much, sir.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Joe Grito, you're welcome to give testimony at this time. Thank you, good morning, sir.
Buenas. Buenas, madam Speaker. And honorable senators, you're honorable too. So, buenas para todo, amzu ni mangai genoro. First thing I notice, oh. Ina onu si, you say, ozoa Grito, chume lan zan si, beni, diamana, na tumis tiktigo. Usupoti todu i dos, eh, eh, resolution, dan i bill. Lo wahaguni uri pava, na i bill, dosi dona sponsor. She, Vice Speaker, Tina Munna Barnes, and C. James Mullen. I resolution. Estegui ipasalistani taato sia, ni mangai gi, guini ni sumupotisti resolution. Ah, lo taiguisi Senator Perez, taiguisi Mullen, taiguisi Frank Blas Jr., ita toni zauna taato zo, lo taigui. There are a few reasons why a senator is not present during a public hearing. And I, I get that, you know, either one is sick or some family issues that needs to be contended with or off island. But if you are a sponsor of any, any public hearing, any bill or resolution, and your name is on the paper, if there's no excuse that is credible enough for you not to be present, then you should be present. At the very least, there are, like, the gentleman, there are, there are 15 senators. At the very least, all these sponsors should be sitting here. That is their moral responsibility to our people. The other thing is that, excuse me. The other thing is, I don't have any understanding why a public hearing like this should be scheduled at eight in the morning. This issue consists, I mean, is, is a concern of people who are old. People who are already manonku. And I know maybe there's an idea that maybe we could push this at eight o'clock and get it over with. But let me tell you, I support both, the bill and the resolution. Alright. I don't have the facts that explain to me why we are extending the deadline. I don't have. I heard yesterday that there may have been at least 800 claimants that have not filed a claim and missed the deadline. But these things should be written, and I have no facts, however, regardless of what the excuse is, I support both of this. And I support all the tamoros to be given a deadline to file a war claim. This is something that I oppose since the beginning, that there shouldn't even be a deadline for this. We have gone 90 years, or rather, since 1950 at least. And, and then, the other, the other thing that we have explained to you and to the people of Guam is that there's another big issue, is that all those people that died on or before December 26th or 24th, 2016, are not eligible to file a claim. And I have complained and I've spoken in this very floor about my opposition to that. So, it is obvious that our people, to some technicalities and misunderstanding, our people need more than just to be told to go and file. This is the reason why we're sitting here, is because there's got to be some government entity organized to assist our people to file. I know, na guanabai nae, na kalanistadzodimasi, no, no, i, i, la la, para ta si gi, pul mi pitamzu. But if you have to hold your hands, if you, if we have to hold their hands and help them along to file a claim, then organize an act hot committee so that these people cannot be left behind later on in the future again. Okay? Let me tell you that everybody, and there's ample historical documentation regards to what happened here on Guam, and I, we don't need to regurgitate further on the historical information as to how brutal and how murderous the Japanese were to us. But this compensation is basically from the United States. And I strongly believe that although there, there has been ample categorization of whether, how much people should be compensated when they are, when their necks are cut off, basically murdered by the Japanese and tortured and raped and forced to march. And has, was explained by the war claims, war claims process that was agreed upon by our leaders that these people should be compensated this much, that much, this much, that much. I strongly believe that the Japanese should provide a matching fund, a matching amount. Now, if the United States paid the tamoru $10,000 for being forced to march, I believe that the Japanese should provide Guam $10,000 $10,000 matching to match the United States because the Japanese are really the responsible people to compensate us for the brutality that they committed against our people. And I just scribble things that I probably, that I think I need to ex, to express. The bill is citing also that the deadline of 2018. And that, and, and both the resolution and the bill is asking to extend the deadline from 2018 to, I, I didn't really read to understand it completely, but to, how many more years do we need? I don't know. Did it say extend the 2018 to only one year? I'm telling you, one year's not enough. The Guam War Reparation Commission, that was established by this legislature, and several senators were appointed to be the members of that war reparation commission, or I think one of them is the Honorable B.J. Cruz. When you read that law that created that commission, I don't believe that that commission is non-functional or voided or over. They still have a job, I believe. That, that bill is still, I mean, the law and the commission is still obligated to do everything to facilitate the issues that are coming up with the war claims. And I understand that, that maybe the legislature could look into that law and find a reason to appoint new members to that war claims, to the war reparation commission. And find out what else they can do to finalize and close the books on our war claims. Now, what I'm going to recommend, whether it is workable or not, is that when you put in the whereas on your resolution, whereas this, whereas that. One is, we always seem to cite the number 20,000 residents, right? 20,000 individuals. I would think that that included non-Chamoros here, you know, military, military, US military here stationed here before 1941. But I also think that there are, there, there were at least 19,000 Chamoros on Guam. But when you begin to research as an historian and you research how many, when, when they write things about how many people were here on Guam and who were subject to the war claims, and then we seem to be quoting that there were 15,000 Chamoros here, or 16,000 Chamoros, or 12,000 Chamoros. We need to get some kind of a and his, a, a group of historians and do our research and find out how many Chamoros of, how many of our people were actually here, because that is very important. How can we provide war claims when we don't know that there are 2,000 more Chamoros here on Guam during World War II? We don't even know how many Chamoros were killed by the Japanese. We don't know how many Chamoros were killed by the Americans during the invasion. We need to establish that historical, we need to do historical research and finally verify how many people were killed by the Japanese and how many were killed by the Americans, whether collateral or what. Because I know for a fact that in my family alone, there are more than 10 people killed by the Americans. That's seldom talk. Nobody talks about that during liberation either. But we need to find that out because if we continue to, to say 20,000 individual, then you, you compare that to the number of people that received the war claim, that can tell you a lot. And I'm just saying that please try to verify that 20,000 because stop citing the number of people here without any verification there, that there, or documentation that there were indeed 20,000 people here. The other recommendation I would like to, for the, for, for the resolution to be added with is add another whereas. Add another whereas that all war survivors, all those people who were present on Guam during the Japanese occupation have the right of war reparation regardless of their time of death. And I, I would like to include that our parents and grandparents and even great-grandparents died during the occupation. And because my parents and my grandparents died before 2016, they were not eligible for war reparation. That is in a violation of their human rights of war reparation and why do we always agree with something that we know it is wrong? Wrongly done against some people? I, there's nothing. I don't have any bad thing to say other than I fully support what you senators and speakers are doing and continue to do it. And please do not be weak in the midst of our adversities. Because we are not that people actually. Our history told us that our people were not weak. We were just reduced almost to extinction. And all those Chamoros who were brave to fight to the death were killed. And I want to thank you for coming up with this. And please, for the sake of the manomku, God, look, I know when you look at me, Joe, you know me for the past years. Nobody's thinking that Joe is a manomku. I am 77. I am a manomku. But you know what? I'm speaking for the manomku and those that have gone before me. My brothers and I will always, will always fight for our people. I think that it is the right thing to do for the Guam Legislature to add that all those people who died before 2016, I believe it's December 24 or December 26, 2016, shall also be eligible to be provided the war reparation, just like the others that survived. It's, it is incredible for me that we agreed with that. But I, I know that there is a reason why we agreed to such an agreement because we thought that maybe the compensation can move on and then later on we can settle those kinds of discrepancies. But if this legislature do not act on that, I'm afraid that we will never settle our war reparation claim of our people. We have to do it. We are in the midst, very close to celebrating our liberation. I'm just gonna hold back my, my real interpretation of what liberation is. But thank you very much for coming up with the bill and the resolution, and I, I support it. And please, if you have any questions, I'll be glad to respond. Other than that, I shall leave. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Garrido. For, to address one of your questions was the statutory deadline and how long we were requesting to lift it. For the Resolution 121-36, it's just to completely remove a deadline altogether so that it would be an indefinite opportunity for those to continue to apply for the, for the war reparations. That's just specifically for Resolution 121. And then the question was, why were we addressing the, was it why were we addressing the removal of the timeline? Is because we've had a lot of constituents come to our office asking us, that haven't, that were not able to submit the applications in on time. And so that's why we are addressing it. And Mr. Rivera, to, to address some of your concerns, we are looking at different types of avenues to try to, to try to for justice, right? For the justice for, for our grandparents and for our parents to receive the war reparations as was agreed upon historically. And so there, in these measures, we have one that goes directly to President Biden. We have one that acts within locally our government and then also one to Congress. And so we're trying all different avenues of approach to try to secure the right thing to do. So thank you very much. We share in the frustrations that you have and we are continuing to work towards this goal until we are 100% complete. I don't think this will, we will not give up. Okay, so at this time, I would like to offer Senator Shelton, if she has any comments for, or questions for the panel.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. I don't have any questions for the panel, but I want to say my sincerest thank you to everyone for being here today, for sharing your story, your parents' story, and reliving this moment for all of us. I know how difficult it is, how the wounds are still very fresh for, for our people. So I really appreciate it that you're here continuing to fight and working towards a better, a better form of justice for the people of Guam who suffered throughout the occupation. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Senator Sinagastian?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'd like to thank the panel for being here and Ralph, we go back a while back. Ben and Joe, Ben, I was in the police department with Ben, Joe, we were together in the, in the National Guard. Yes, the idea of no deadline, just continue, everybody continue to file is appropriate. The issue you brought up, Mr. Joe, in reference to the Japanese, maybe paying a share. We remind ourselves that the United States government, who's now actually got us to pay our own, pay our own people, the, the atrocity is, is amazing how that worked. But I believe the goal now is to let's settle that. Then let's go after that issue you brought up. Maybe see how we can address that with the Japanese government that you need to pay your share. Regardless of the United States government said, we'll take care of Guam, which they failed to do. That's the message I'm getting from you, Joe, and I, and I believe you're, you're right on track. And that maybe, and if possible, find how if the, if the, if the, our people that passed before, they even came up with this, this war reparation payment can be addressed and then we move forward from that. But I don't believe the door is closed yet. I don't see it closing. As long as I'm here, I'm going to continue supporting that. We just keep moving forward one day at a time and take a bite of it, and I'd give up on it. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Senator Sinagastian. Madam Speaker?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just, danklune sidosmasi for all of you for being here again and to continue. I think you always remind us and you make it very clear, and I'm always so grateful that you are continuing to educate all of us, all of Guam, that this is real, that this is something that we cannot ever forget or get wrong or get, or become complacent about either, right? That, and that even, even though we've received some war claims, right? That, and that's good, but it's, you know, for justice to be truly done, it can never be enough. It's not enough. Yeah, it's very clear those, it's unbelievable, right? When you brought up Mrs. Elmsley and people who have passed away prior to this deadline, that's, it, it can never settle right in our heads, I'm sure, and in our hearts because yeah, they, we've, they've, they're the ones who were fighting for it for so long, like your mother, Mr. Ralph. And they fought for it. They're the reasons why, and it was even, you know, we've come this far, but they're the ones who lived through it and they're the ones who suffered. Many of them suffered, you know, the most and so yeah, I, I know. It's not always satisfactory, like the, the way the, you know, what we have in front of us at, in one moment. But I hope we don't lose faith that we're not going to give up, that we're going to keep trying and that we need to be, continue. I really appreciate the, see, Joe's suggestion, you know, we need to continue to be creative and to not to keep saying it, first of all, keep saying it over and over again, right? That there were people who died prior to this deadline, who truly suffered, who, who were even killed, who were not covered by this, and that is continues to be an injustice. And secondly, that we can be creative and we can look, not give up just because the United States gave up or anybody else gave up, that we, we don't have to give up. And we should never give up trying to be creative, trying to find another way to ensure some type of, or, or better justice, you know? And so I want to very much thank you for being here, to continuing, yeah, despite the hour, despite the inconvenience and everything that it is, and despite, you know, your family still suffering in a hospital and you're still here to do this with us. I really appreciate that and I know, like when the manomku, they have to come and do this in front of Congress, in front of commissions and in front of the legislatures. They had to relive their stories over and over, but they were willing to do that for justice. So I want to thank you for also being willing to do that. It's, I want you to know, I'm taking very seriously everything that you've said and we will continue to try our best. Sidosmasi. Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Senator Tidigui, do you have any questions or comments for the panel?
Thank you, Madam Speaker. First, I'd like to thank you so much for being here today and, and also not giving up on the fight for justice. I'd like to thank Mr. Sblon, who was here earlier, saying those kind words about me. And, uh, you know, Ms. Correll, um, your stories are just looking at the binder that you brought this afternoon and, and keeping all that data and history is very important, and I want to commend you for that and, and not give up. And I hope today's public hearing too would be incorporated into that binder to show the fight will continue because it's people like the next generation. Mr. Rivera, you are the, the new Mr. Garridos because I grew up listening to these advocates, the Brother Garridos going up advocating with passion, major passion. When they spoke, people listened because they put their heart on their sleeve and in their voice. And now seeing the next generation, which is yourself, to come up and have that same passion to continue the work that they've been doing and advocating for it, it's commendable. I thank you so much. You know, I was, when you mentioned about your father, I, I wish him the very, very best. My father is still alive today too. He'll be 92 years old in September. And he tells me the story every time, even when we're driving down to Inalahan, where we're originally from. He will tell me stories about the war and how they carried the bombs from Inalahan to Haganya, to Aganya. And he reminds me every day, and I see it in his eyes, even to the day when he received his, his check from the war reparation, he turned to me and he said, it's not fair for the others that they don't get it. And definitely not fair for some of the manamko who, who wasn't able to, to meet that deadline because they didn't know about it. Many of them are ranchers. They don't have electronics or they don't, you know, look in the paper every day. And it's not fair. And I think Mr. Garrido hit it on the nose when he said that there should be a commission to seek out those individuals, not just think that they're going to show up, but seek out them and bring them to the table. You know, I introduced a bill, 129, that is not being heard in this public hearing today. I was the first one that introduced a bill with regards to reparations and helping those who missed the deadline. In fact, my bill creates a commission on Guam to assist it, but it's not here today, which is almost disingenuous and it, and it just dures the water on what we're trying to do and in the intent. I'm not saying Bill 130 or the resolution that's being presented today is bad at all, but why are you leaving out the first bill that was introduced in this 36 Guam Legislature to address war claims? Why was, why is it not being heard? So I ask you panelists to please, I'm hoping that the Oversight Chair also hears Bill 129. It's more thorough. It talks about the commission, Mr. Garrido, that you brought up. And I hope that you'll be here during that public hearing. I'm sorry you would have to come back. It should have been in this public hearing today. It's Bill 129. I too have a lot of passion. I too feel you, Mr. Rivera, when you're, when you're talking. It, it makes no sense that we have to, you know, muddy the water here and make this political. We need to put politics away from this and focus on the objective. Take politics out of this.
Senator Tello, please.
And move forward with what's right. I'm, I'm speaking, I'm not done yet, Madam Speaker. I didn't know there was a timeframe.
No. If you please, can you please focus on what the agenda is today?
The intent is exactly what Bill 129 does, 130 does in the resolution. And to, for transparency purposes, I want this panel to know and those who are listening, I made a phone call to people who've, who've been fighting this fight for quite a long time, from the very beginning, from the Robert Underwood days. Resolution, this resolution may be very, very difficult to get through. It might be heard, but in order for something like this to happen, it would take an act of Congress. In fact, it would have to take another law to go through Congress to change it, to change the deadline or to allow the extension. But you're right, we can do this right here at home. We can make that happen at home. Now, Mr. Rivera, it's gonna, it's gonna take a little bit of time. I'm gonna, you know, be honest with you, looking at the timeline, because it's important that all the claims are adjudicated that are put forth now that has been submitted to the foreign claims, US Foreign Claims Department. And then once that is completed and it's brought back to Guam or it's, it's closed, then whatever is left in the account is then brought, given to Guam, and we can start this commission. But I will tell you right now, I will not give up. And my father reminds me almost every day of the importance to continue to fight, especially for those who are no longer here today. So please, look at Bill 129. I would happy to hear what you have to say. I'll call my office. I'm looking forward to hearing from you. And again, thank you for continuing the fight. Thank you so much for being here and taking the time. Sidusmasi.
Thank you, Senator Tello. I just wanted to address one of the concerns that you had. I moved, I moved to have the resolution heard on this day, Resolution 121-36, which is what I sponsored, asking or imploring President Biden to, to extend the deadline. So it's not going to go to Congress. However, when I was scheduling my hearing for the resolution, the other senators came and asked if I could have a joint hearing for these other resolutions and bills. And so in no way was your bill left out in any intentional order. It was just the fact that I was scheduling for this resolution and then they reached out to our office.
Well, Madam Speaker, you know, I, I mean, Madam Chair, the sponsor of 120, 130 is not even here today.
Yes, thank you. She, I think she had a family emergency. Senator Brown, do you have any questions or comments for the panel specific to the items on the agenda today, please?
Well, so much question because I, I don't think we have anything to question with the testimony that's been provided this morning. I mean, this has been a long and winding road. It's been so many years, obviously almost 80 years since the end of World War II. I had a direct involvement when I got out of graduate school and I came back to Guam and I was working with the administration at that time. The Guam War Reparations Commission had been created and I was tasked as executive director to staff the commission. I was at this hearing that's listed in Senator Bomba's letter that's included in our packet at that hearing that occurred with Congressman Ben Blaz with HR 2024. And the, the work that he did along with his fellow members of the House to move this issue, of course, as we know, Congressman Blaz himself was here during World War II and went through that experience, I'm sure that led to what was quite an impressive military career to be our first Tramor General. There's a lot of emotion with this issue, even those of, those of us that are much younger that did not live through the war. I mean, for me, my mother was born several years after the war, but she had older siblings along with my grandparents that suffered through the war, that went through the concentration camp at Manengan, that were brutalized, that lost their homes and had death in their family. It's a very emotional issue, even for those of us that didn't live through the war. Because we had to listen to the stories of our, our family members that did and the suffering that they endured. You know, we have a tendency in politics to want to get the recognition as somehow, as if we've carried the, the heavy load, which we've not. We're not deserving of that. And I, I certainly am disappointed to hear, you know, that there's a sense of disagreement about how bills are heard on the floor and resolutions because obviously we cannot lose sight here of what our priorities are with regards to facilitating the agenda of our people. And definitely when the issue first came out to address compensation, I think we all recognized the one-year time period was not adequate. I mean, it take, it had taken so long to get here to a time when Congress has finally recognized, the US government finally recognized their obligation to the people of Guam. And yet our people, our manamko, our elderly, and my mom's siblings that are still alive are well into their mid to late 80s now, that are still alive. There's only four remaining of the original eight. The timeline, including those that are off island to be able to submit their application and even be aware of this, I don't think that one year after waiting almost, well, that was what, 78 years after the war, that this was an adequate timeframe. So I certainly support every effort to extend that timeline. You know, when I staffed the commission, I was able to go to this hearing in Washington, and this was what, 32 years ago, to staff people like Beatrice Emsley, Tun Pete Cruz, the former and late Mayor Bernardo from Jolnia. The three of them were the representatives of the members of our community that suffered during the war, that had the opportunity to go into the US Congress and say and relate their story. I have to tell you, I don't think there was a dry eye in the House that day at that hearing. The pain was still very real. You know, Tun Pete Cruz, the night before, he was up very late. He called me almost one in the morning and told me, Joanne, I have revisions I want to make to my testimony. I said, okay, Mr. Cruz, what do you want to change? We'll, we'll change it, even though I knew he was very anxious. He'd come so far and waited so long to have his voice heard. And I could see his nervousness because he wanted to make sure that things were said just the right way that he felt they needed to hear it and hear his message. You know, I'm honored to have had the opportunity to work with these survivors, these heroes in our community that were able to carry and take that message to the US Congress. And I'm very sad until this day that they never lived to see any, not the compensation, money in our society is how we value things that, but they never got the recognition for the suffering that then, that they and many other people in our community suffered. Not a single one of them are here today. Neither are my grandparents, neither are many of our, our parents, grandparents, great-grandparents that suffered during the war. They're never going to be here to see this. Not the money. Money comes through our fingers and washes away so quickly, but the acknowledgement, the recognition of what our people went through and the suffering that they endured even after the war just to restore their lives, their families. You know, we hear of the families from Sumai that moved to Santa Rita and the families like my grandfather who grew up right next to the, the old Spanish palace here that were moved up to San Hanya after the war and had to start all over again, start their lives literally from nothing all over again. And colleagues, I, I will venture to say, this is one issue we must be united on because in 1989, 32 years ago, and how many of our people have died since then? Because I was there to receive their applications and help them fill in their applications for their war claims. But because our own leaders at the time, our own leaders here on Guam could not agree ultimately on the amounts of compensation, HR 2024 never moved anywhere. It died. It died because our own leadership here on Guam could not come to consensus, even after hearing the voices of our people in public hearings throughout the island of Guam. We even traveled to California to have members of our Guam community that were living there, that were survivors of the war, provide testimony. And then we went to Washington DC and our own inability right here on Guam, those of us, many of us, the, you know, who were not alive during the time, could not come to a consensus because we couldn't agree on the amounts. And that at the time was the closest we ever got to addressing compensation for our people. You know, a number of years ago, after my grandfather had passed away, Madam Chair, I had gone through his papers that he had left for us. And in it, he had a little receipt. That's why this issue is very emotional for me. When this whole initial issue back in the 70s and 1980s were made to address compensation, our people contributed funds to help pay for their legal, legal case. On that receipt was $100. And back then, for $100 was a lot of money, especially for my grandfather as a retiree, who by then was well into his late 70s. And I know many other families went through that. So while we can argue these issues on who's what and whose name is at the top of the resolution and who got put in front of the line and who didn't, I think we need to have a better sense of our responsibilities here, that this issue in particular, while we can debate many others, this issue in particular is very hard to debate, is very hard to argue. And I don't think we should be overwhelmed by our sense of importance about who gets to get recognized for moving these issues forward. Our people have suffered so long because of this. This has been a tremendous heartache and I, who am not even of that generation, I still feel that pain because of the loved ones that I know that have suffered because of this, as you have and your family has. So I hope we're mindful of that because I think of all the people that have died since 1989, many of our manamko that died since 19, many that I have sat down and talked to and helped fill in. The, almost 1,000 plus more than applications that were filled in at that time. And yet our people never got justice because we right here on Guam could not come to a consensus. So colleagues, please keep that in mind. We have a greater obligation beyond ourselves. And I hope Senator Tidigui's bill also gets heard because her bill was introduced before any of the bills and resolutions that are before us today. This is something we should collectively be working on together. Whose name is at the top really should be irrelevant to this whole process. So with that, thank you so much for coming in, for sharing your stories, your heart, your pain, the pain of the generation, the greatest generation that came before us that suffered so much, so much. This is our effort here, we're almost really doing nothing. What we're contributing to this process is literally almost nothing for what needs to be done and what has been done before us. So I'm hopeful, Madam Chair, that as we move forward, that we, we collectively keep in mind the reason why this is being done and the people for whom this is being done so that we can find a way, even for those that are not here today. Because yes, money, we think, you know, like I said, money goes through our hands very quickly. When the, our people needed it the most, they didn't have it. I'm hopeful that we will collectively work how we could bring these respective resolutions and bills together so that everyone can be a part of this process and that we can hopefully put to rest the pain that we feel. And like I said, I am not of that general, I, I was not there to deal with the suffering. I heard the stories from my grandfather who very rarely spoke about the war. It's too painful to talk about these things. My grandmother died several years after the war. I never got to meet her. My, my mother, uh, lost her mother when she was only three years old. So colleagues, thank you. I mean, I, I, I think we just need to come together on this issue. Let's not make the mistake that happened before because so many of our people that could have been compensated back in 1989 were not because of the dissension and disagreement here because of the amounts of money. And they never got that recognition, as Senator Tello mentioned. Thank goodness, her, her father and the remaining members that were born during the war that are still with us, thank goodness, were able to, but the majority of our people have since passed away. And the more we argue and we disagree, uh, even less of our people will be recognized. And it's not the money, as I said, money is, you know, it's such a fleeting comfort of life. But more importantly, we need to put this issue to rest. We need to come united on this issue and, and, and bring this issue to rest so that our people get the recognition and the justice and the acknowledgement, if anything, the acknowledgement for the suffering that they endured during the war and the suffering they endured after trying to rebuild their lives and rebuild their families. With that, Madam Chair, thank you. And thank you to all of you for coming in and providing your testimony this morning.
Thank you, Senator Brown. I, I believe that we can agree on one issue and that is that, um, one, the statutory required, the statutory deadline needs to be lifted. And in whichever avenue that we can get this accomplished, that we should work together and get it accomplished. I'd like to thank all of you for spending your time this morning, coming out here, giving your testimonies, sharing your stories. And Ms. Correll, thank you for all. And Ms. Correll, thank you for also helping us understand, for the record, your family lineage and for listing their names. That's very important, especially for historical documentation. We have received, we have exhausted all items on the agenda, and the committee will continue to accept written testimony for the next 10 working days. Testimonies may be sent via email to senator TC Nelson at GuamLegislature.org, or delivered to the Office of Senator Talina Cruz Nelson, Suite 202 Alpha 173 Espinal Avenue, Haganya, Guam 96910. A record of today's hearing will be available on the YouTube and, and on the Guam Legislature media site. This concludes the joint public hearing. It is now 10 o'clock in the morning. The hearing is adjourned. Thank you, everyone, and have a good day. God bless.